Get a rule call of the members, please.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Here.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Here.
Supervisor Brownell.
Here.
Supervisor Latini. Supervisor Borst.
Here.
Supervisor Hayes.
Here.
Supervisor Schmittler.
Here.
Supervisor Cronenwetter. Supervisor Reinhardt.
Here.
Supervisor Partee.
Here.
Supervisor Heisen.
Here.
Supervisor Don Trout. Supervisor Enzlow.
Here.
Supervisor Shipley.
Here.
You have a court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Please join us for a pledge allegiance to the moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. We have no presentations tonight. We're going to go to open privilege of the floor. If there's anybody from the public that would like to address the board, now would be the time. Five minutes, if you'd like. State your name and where you're from, please.
Ave Bodder, resident of Willard and the executive director for Cornell Cooperative Extension in the county. Chairman Enzlow and members of the board supervisors, first I'll say I'm really close to the five minutes, so please don't give me the hook. Thank you for this opportunity to speak about the county's proposed allocation to the Seneca County Cornell Cooperative Extension. It is my understanding that after a proposed $26,000 increase in the original first draft, level funding is now being proposed for CCE and other affiliate organizations. Given inflation over the past several years, level funding results in a cut to our organization and makes it more difficult to provide quality programming and retain professional, experienced staff. Most of you know the good work that we do in connecting the resources and knowledge base of Cornell University and the entire land grant system to the people of Seneca County to help them make decisions and improve their quality of life. Our staff works with community members and partner organizations to fill important informational and leadership needs in our core mission areas of agriculture, 4-H youth development, nutrition, including a farm-to-school program in each school district, community and economic vitality, climate change, home horticulture, and recycling education. Please allow me to briefly review some of the impacts Seneca County CCE has made. In the past fiscal year, the farm-to-school and dairy-in-the-classroom lessons reached over 5,900 students in our school districts, including 1,000 home garden seed kits provided to school families and the general public. With our support, three of our four districts were accepted and sent teams to take part in the New York State Farm-to-School Institute, making up 10% of all districts selected in the first five years of the program. This past October, in partnership with the county and Seneca Meadows, 344 vehicles participated in our annual electronics recycling and shredding event, recycling 21,722 pounds of electronics. Our horticulture educator and master gardeners provide support for the county's three farmers' markets, as well as community gardens. We provide the bookkeeping support that allows the markets to offer SNAP, EBT, and senior nutrition program benefits to be used for fresh produce. Last year at the Seneca Falls Market alone, over $15,000 worth of EBT and other program coupons were redeemed, helping those families in need to eat healthier while also driving the local economy. As a member of the Willard Task Force, CCE has provided logistical and technical Zoom support to make the meetings hybrid. We also record the meetings and they are available to the public on a Cornell-based video channel. We pay our shares in CCE's regional ag teams from our county allocation. Seneca County's investment of $51,000 in CCE's vegetable, grape, and dairy teams leverages $1.9 million in extension and applied agricultural research programs, critical to the success of farms in Seneca County. In partnership with Cornell and other counties, we are able to deploy 21 highly skilled specialists in the areas of vegetable, tree fruit, small fruit, grapes, dairy, livestock, field crops, and ag business management. The CCE agriculture teams provide cutting-edge research and education to Seneca County's 422 farms, operating on 103,156 acres, with a total market value of over $560 million, and generates annually over $110 million for the local economy, according to the USDA 2022 Ag Census. The county's investment in supporting agriculture through CCE represents only one-half of 1% of the value of the county's ag industry per year. A small investment to ensure the growth and profitability of the food industry that is vital to put food on our tables but is also an important economic engine in the county. The county's investment to ensure a strong agriculture and food system represents a 38x return on investment, not including the value of fringe and overhead from the university. Including this, the value of the program is 3.5 million, or a return on investment of 68x. I could go on, but I do only have those five minutes. While we are not technically a county department, I feel that during my time as executive director, our funding has been considered an allocation to help carry out the important work to the county, rather than simply a donation to help an organization that the county feels is worthwhile. I realize that you are facing some fiscal constraints, but ask that rather than level funding for a cooperative extension, that the budget provides a $17,000 increase to our current allocation, which will allow for a 3% cost-of-living adjustment for staff salaries. I know that you are well aware of the difficulties of retaining staff and the need to build on increases for county employees. We share the same difficulties and also share the same goals of trying to improve the lives of the people of Seneca County. This increase will help us to retain our staff and continue to provide quality programming. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question before he leaves? Can I ask him a question regarding the funding before you?
Sure.
I'm just, if the funding stays flat, you made a mention in that that 17, was 17,000 increase, is that solely the three, for salary?
I just picked that out for the salary.
Okay.
For a salary increase. I know you guys have lots of other things, we'll try to make do with that, but I can't live without the staff that I have, so that was the major thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Erin Perazzini, Seneca County Soil and Water Conservation District. While discussing the county budget status at a recent board meeting, we were informed that the county is proposing a freeze to soil and water and other affiliate organizations. I understand times are tough, and we all need to do our part and tighten the belt and be prudent about our fiscal responsibilities with taxpayer dollars. Doing our part to be fiscally responsible, this year, the district returned $11,600 of unused weed harvesting funds to the county. For 2025, Soil and Water only requested a 2.2% increase, equating to approximately $11,000. In preparing our 2025 budget in order to avoid drastic increases due to a 24% health insurance increase imposed by Exelis, we have already made significant reductions to our 2025 operating expenses. This has left little room for more reductions. Further reductions could impact the services and programs Soil and Water performs throughout the county, such as drainage project maintenance and weed harvesting. Soil and Water Services also subsidize county and town projects, ultimately reducing their fiscal burden. Should these reductions occur, those responsibilities may fall back on the municipalities. For example, this year Soil and Water helped the town of Lodi implement a roadbank stabilization project, saving the town $14,000. In the long run, 2025 budget reductions will only push financial impacts to our 2026 budget. Please also keep in mind, while the district is anticipating a $3.8 million coming to, coming from the state for the Eastern Finger Lakes Coalition, these are height, there are heightened expectations to implement more BMPs associated with that funding. Without proper support from the county, the district will not only be unable to meet these, but may also have to return the funds to the state, giving Seneca County a black eye. This is in direct opposition to the county's goals to providing essential services like clean drinking water to the county residents. This also means impaired water quality directly impacting tourism, which has longstanding economic impacts for Seneca County as well. With that, I ask you to please consider approving Seneca County Soil and Water Conservation District's proposed 2025 budget request as submitted. Thank you.
Erin, I'm sorry, I just want to ask, you made a reference that some of that money is hand-in-hand with proposed grant funding, or is, am I hearing you that if the funding doesn't go through, the grant is in jeopardy? Did I misunderstand that?
Yes. Yeah. If we don't have support from the county, then we may not be able to implement as many practices, which means we won't be eligible for grant funding.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Murray. I'm the current chair of the Seneca County IDA. We are an affiliated organization, so it's mostly, mostly ditto to what you just heard from Ave and Erin. One thing I would like to point out, earlier this year, while the county was looking at renovating and reorganizing its staff within this building, the IDA was asked to move out of the offices in this building within 30 days. So we were given 30 days' notice to find another place to go. So we moved out in three weeks, so we beat that deadline. We are now housed in the old Exelis BCS building in the, in the back parking lot of the hotel. We're probably going to incur another $30,000 to $40,000 this year, simply by running, maintaining, and operating our own building. You know, it's not going to kill us, we'll be fine. But right now, I want to make sure that everyone understood that out of good faith, out of a, a good faith effort to work with the county and what we felt its needs were. Sarah Davis, our executive director, and her assistant, picked up boxes, moving cartons, and moved because they were asked to. That's what we did. And, you know, keep that in mind, too. Thanks.
Supervisor Trout.
Sure. So in April of '22, we all received notice from the state that the correctional facility at Willard would be closed. It was kind of summarily announced, and there was a lot of gnashing of teeth. But at that point, we said, look, you know, that's what it is, what can we turn Willard into? Let's look forward, let's try to be solution-oriented. So we decided that we would fund what was later known as the highest and best use study. It was about $160,000 out of the IDA budget. We interviewed economic development candidates in the fall of 2022. We named MRB in the spring of 2023. And then in December of 2023, less, almost a year ago, MRB presented their highest and best use study. The county threw in about $25,000. The IDA put in $160,000. And again, that's for economic development. That's for building an economic base that generates revenue streams for the county. Occupancy tax, sales tax, property tax, for a successful development at Willard. We still hold for that, and we're still behind it, but I feel like Sarah Davis and, and her team were the ones that got it kicked off. Really, they really did.
Bruce, when did you, when did you move out?
We moved out, I think, I mean, I guess, we got notice, Bob, around April 1st. We moved out before the end of the month, of April.
Are they using your space now?
I think the lawyer's in the space now, the attorney, I think.
Anybody else that'd like to address the board? Okay. Get a approval of the minutes.
Motion.
Everybody have a chance? Motion, second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Reports of special committees. Any special committees reports tonight? Okay. All right, we're going to move on. Chairman's remarks. I just want the record to show Supervisor Latini's here. Also, I want to be clear that the request for the IDA came at the recently vacated county manager's request, and that was not my doing. That was his doing, for the record. He's the one that went to the IDA director and asked them to leave. That was his doing on his own. So I just want to be clear about that. Also, I don't want the affiliate organizations to feel like this is, you know, we're trying to attack them. We are just tasked with a hard budget due to some past decisions that really put us in a predicament, and I think it's important that you know we value what the affiliate organizations do for our community, it's just we have a tough decision ahead of us, so. County Attorney. Thank you. Communications.
Communications, 310 through 343 have been received and filed.
Thank you. Okay. First up, we have number 11, Supervisor Heisen.
Yes, I gotta flip the page here, okay. Authorized in agreement with S2AY Rural Health Network, DBA, the Pivotal Public Health Partnership for Network Membership and Quality Improvement Activities.
Motion.
Supervisor, could you, do you have your microphone?
Got company here, company here.
Oh, okay, yep, there you are, okay. All right, we got a second on that?
Motion.
All right, second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 12, Supervisor Heisen.
Yes. Reappoint Tiffany Foulke to the Seneca County Board of Health.
Support.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 13.
13, Mental Health and Substance Abuse 2025 Agreements for Contract Services.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 14, Supervisor Heisen.
Yes. Authorized acceptance of grant from the Office of Temporary and Disability Assistance.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 15.
Calling on New York State to protect the public water supply from harmful contaminants by increase in funding for county drinking water enhancement grants.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 16.
Yes. Apply for and accept New York State ACHO Climate Change and Health Adaptation Projects Grant for the Senior Safeguard Public Health Preparedness Initiative.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Public Works Supervisor Reinhardt, number 17.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Authorized Facilities Department to issuing notice to bidders that Seneca County will receive sealed bids for on-demand electrical HVAC and plumbing services for 2025.
Got a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 18.
Authorized in agreement with John Snyder Architects for architectural services related to the Office of the Aging and Security Project.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 19.
Authorized in agreement with Barrow Architect for Architectural Services related to the rehab of the Papa Bear Cupola.
Support.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 20.
Authorized in agreement with Barrow Architecture for Architectural Services related to the rehab of the Papa Bear Bathroom.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Supervisor Borst, number 21.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 22.
Second.
Oh, you got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 23.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 24.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 25.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Supervisor Borst, your microphone on? Okay. Thank you. All right. Number 26, Supervisor Brownell.
Yes, sir. Board of Supervisors authorized a renewed contract with United Medical Resources for the purpose of health claims and adjustments for the medical and pharmaceutical services for Seneca County Correctional Facility incarcerated individuals.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 27.
Board of Supervisors authorized Deputy Sheriff Christopher Leest to attend a mobile device examiner training for the National Computer Foreonics Institute in Hoover, Alabama from January 6, 25 to January 23, 2025.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 28.
Authorized in 2025 contract with Motorola Solutions for radio maintenance and repair for the 911 Center, E91 Backup Site, and Tower Sites.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
I would like to make an amendment to this resolution. I was informed tonight that the Director of Emergency Management has been able to negotiate a better price for the county, changing the contract, contract price from $265,999.23 to $205,904.
I will second that amendment.
Quite a savings to the county, thank you, Melissa.
Excellent work. Okay, we got a second on that. Any discussion on the amendment? Besides wow and thank you? All right. All in favor on the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, okay. Back as amended, Supervisor?
Pardon?
Oh, want to do it again, number 28, as amended?
As amended. Authorized 2025 contract with Motorola Solutions for radio procedure repair for E91 Center, E91 Backup Site, and Tower Sites, 2005, 904.
Yes, thank you. You got a second on that?
Second.
As amended, okay, perfect. Any discussion? All in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Be crazy to oppose that one, anyway. Okay. Number 29.
Board of Supervisors authorized acceptance of a grant from the New York State Parks and Recreation for the enforcement of a navigational law by the County Sheriff's Department.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 30.
Acceptance of a 2023 Public Safety Answering Point Operating Grant, AESP AAP Grant, $160,865.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Let's see here, Supervisor Jeff Trout, number 31.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, offer a resolution for the Harriet Tubman Underground Railroad New York Scenic Byway nomination and corridor management plan adoption.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 32.
Motion to provide tourism promotion development grant funds for the Lodi Whittier Library.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. One opposed. Supervisor Latini. Motion still carried. Okay. Number 33.
Motion to authorize a contract for development of the Seneca County Comprehensive Housing Strategy.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 34.
Motion to approve and award Seneca Housing Incorporated their application to the Seneca County Housing Trust Fund.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 35.
Motion to extend a tourism promotion development grant funds for the 2024 It's a Wonderful Life Museum and Festival.
Support.
Got a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 36.
Motion for the Board of Supervisors to establish the 2025 funding appropriation for the Tourism Promotion Agency, which is the Seneca County Chamber of Commerce.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion? Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I spoke up at the last committee meeting about getting a presentation as the, the chamber, has that been decided on when that will happen?
That will be, it's on the list for the next meeting, the 23rd.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Number 37, Supervisor Partee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, Board of Supervisors authorizes the Finance Department to pay the mortgage tax.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 38.
Board of Supervisors authorizes agreements to obligate ARPA funds.
Support.
Got a second? Any discussion?
I need to make an amendment.
Okay. Okay.
I want to amend the resolution to change the amount, the last line of the resolution, to $66,804.
I'll second that.
Got a second on that? Any discussion on the amendment?
It was 809.
Oh, I lied, 809.
I'll still second it.
Any discussion on this amendment? All those in favor on the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried, okay. I read it as amended, please Supervisor.
Board of Supervisors authorizes agreements to obligate ARPA funds as amended.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion?
Yes, so what is the total ARPA amount? Do we know, or?
I'm gonna ask Julie.
I'm sorry, Ju. No, no, I'm sorry. So, all these things added together, is that, is that the $66,000, or is that just?
That's additional dollars that were either left underground or used or some that were undeserved to be given.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Any more discussion? All in favor as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Number 39.
Board of Supervisors amends and adopts the 2025 county budget.
Support.
Need a second?
Support.
Got a second? Discussion?
Second.
I'd like to.
Supervisor.
I'd like to make amendment to the thing where we remove from the budget hiring five correction officers for the purpose of opening a second pod at the Sheriff's Department.
Second that for a discussion.
Got a second? Okay, discussion?
Is there a dollar amount associated with that amendment?
So, looking at it and talking with the sheriff, it costs approximately at least $1,400 a day to open that second pod, so over half a million dollars a year for that pod to be open. If we house federal inmates, it's required to have two people there during the day shift, which would be eight hours. So, we figure them at $40 an hour between pay and benefits, comes to $640 a day. So, we would have to have at least seven federal inmates to break even to house them at $90 an inmate. We do house them out, but there also is $200,000 in the budget for housing out. So, if we open a second pod, do we still need the $200,000 in one way or another? However I do the math, there is no way to say it justifies bringing the pod for that kind of money. We do house out, but at $100 a day, we could house out 14 inmates a day and still be ahead. We don't, never got to that point. I think Tim said the most was seven at one point. I think we could save close to half a million dollars by not opening that second pod out of the budget.
So, Tim.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
I just want to clarify a point, only because it came up through vacancy. It's the pod, the five positions for the opening is not for federal inmates, it's for female inmates. Is that correct, Sheriff? Okay, I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, because the money that's being paid out is for housing out females, and the federal inmates were going to be a revenue generator, but it's my understanding that the five positions that the sheriff is asking for is to open up the female pod. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. You mentioned federal, and I wanted to.
We would have to have females at a time just to break even.
So, is there currently not a female pod?
No, they house them out in Rochester.
Okay.
I think Tim said there's five.
Sheriff, would you be able to come up by chance, please?
I was gonna say, yeah, Sheriff.
Supervisor Jeff Trout has questions.
Could you explain this a little more, since it would affect you, obviously?
Sure. The bottom line is, prior to January 1, 24, the Sheriff's Office had 15 correction officer full-time positions unfunded. I simply do not think that unfunding any further positions is in the best interest of the Sheriff's Office or the Correctional Facility. We currently house, as of today, five female incarcerated individuals in Mineral County. At this point, the rough math is we owe Mineral County approximately $260,000 for the year of 2024 for housing out. That does not include transportation costs to and from. Being that it's December, I am heavily concerned about our officers being on the expressways and the thruway transporting our responsibility, which is our incarcerated individuals, to and from their court appearances, medical issues, and other of our responsibilities. I take the position that the incarcerated individuals are the responsibility of the sheriff and the county, and deferring that to other counties, in my opinion, is wrong. We have, we have 38 full-time correction officer positions. I'm not asking for any extra positions. I'm simply asking for the funding for the full strength of our corrections division, as was budgeted in 2024. No, no further positions are being asked upon, other than what was budgeted for 2024.
So, it's not new funding? It was already in the 2024 budget?
Correct. These are budgeted vacant positions. I've had a hard time filling them due to many different factors, civil service being one of them, failure on physical agility exams, competition with other agencies. It's been a struggle, but we work at it every single day.
So, at the Ways and Means Committee meeting, there was a discussion about when things don't get filled, then that becomes fund balance, and then that goes into the reserve. Are these positions examples of that? Because they weren't filled in 2024.
If they, if they stay in the budget and approved and unfilled, then that money at the end of the year would be considered extra, unless there was budget transfer somewhere within the year that were approved by the board.
So, my question is, if we're gonna fund this, and we're still funding to house inmates, how does that work? We've still got $200,000 in this budget to house inmates, but we're also opening another pod for another $600,000, say, a year. So, I guess I don't understand. You spent maybe $240 this year. So, we got that budgeted, but now we're gonna open a pod that's. So, we're funding both.
Would you need both, then, or?
I can't predict the future, but I would say that in the past, we struggled with female correction officers, and that was Sheriff Lewis's position, that he would house them outside, because we lacked the female correction officers. With the inception of our body camera policy, we're able to use male officers in the female pods. It's not ideal, but it is, it's doable, it's legal, and we've done the research with the Commission of Corrections to support that. I still stand behind the fact that these are our responsibility. These are Seneca County's responsibility, in my eyes.
So, if we have just two female inmates, we would still have to pay $1,400 a day and people working there.
We can share escort officers with low populations such as that. We do need.
That wasn't, the $1,400 wasn't even counting escort officers.
Yes, it was.
That's not what you gave me when I called you. You said to have two day shift, two night shifts, and one third shift or something like that.
Right, that's a housing officer plus an escort officer. That's the two. I could tell you that the female incarcerated individuals are in demand right now. Counties are struggling to find female officers. Some have taken the position to use male officers in those pods, and that's a position I plan to take. Federal inmates are not necessarily in demand right now. That may change in January, but right now, there's not a surplus. We have two federal prisoners right now in our jail to offset the cost of the females. However, we're up to five females, so we're not, we're not offsetting those costs.
So, if you had one female, you'd still have to have the pod open, right, once per se?
Theoretically, sure.
And you can't put, it only has to be females, that one, that would be in there?
Only.
You couldn't put male in the same pod?
We cannot put male and female incarcerated individuals together, correct?
So, the pod is exclusive to one gender?
Yes. Now, in a scenario like that, I certainly would take it into consideration that if there was one individual, we may think about housing them elsewhere and doing something creative to try to create a revenue stream, I think, in that scenario. But, being that the consistent population's been five to seven females for a period of time now, I think we need to take a second look at this.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
Thank you. Sheriff, just kind of like a two-pronged question. If that goes through and you get the five officers starting January 21st, what is the timeframe from the time they're hired to the time that pod would be open? That's question one.
Initially, it was a December 1 rollout. We, we struggled to fill these positions, but I've made it clear to our staff that January 1 is going to happen, one way or the other. We needed to finalize some maintenance issues in the housing unit to be ready for that.
And then, second, have you, is there a need, so could you say, hey, I've reached out to all these other counties, and they will, instead of housing in Monroe, house with us? Is that something that you've reached out and maybe talked to the other sheriffs and said, hey, if I can get my female pad open, I don't know where other counties are housing out, but is there anything like maybe unofficial between you and the other sheriffs, say, hey, yeah, we'll take them to you?
Not necessarily. I do know that there's been sheriffs that have reached out inquiring if we're open for females and would send us female incarcerated individuals if we are open. I haven't had those conversations yet.
Supervisor Heisen.
Yes, how many did you have room for in the woman, in the female pods?
Depending on classification, I would say at least, I think it's maximum of 20, don't hold me to those exact numbers, but it depends on classification, but 10 to 12, I think, comfortably. Depending on their special needs and things, and they have to be separated, it becomes lower, because you have to separate them within the pod.
I'd say go look, look for some more inmates, in the females, anyway.
Supervisor Borst.
So, I just have a question regarding the transportation you mentioned. So, when you do transportation, I'm assuming you have to have more than one officer go?
We generally have two.
Okay.
It's not always.
Is it just dropping them off and picking them up, or you have to go pick them up for court dates and all that, too?
Both. So, if they are remanded to the jail, they are brought to, at the current time, Monroe County. If Monroe was full, we could theoretically travel further. We've traveled to Madison in the past, Oneida in the past, and yes, other required attendance is our responsibility.
And that's not in $260,000?
That is just housing costs.
Okay, so that's an additional cost, okay.
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
I'm sorry, Tim, can we go back to Frank's question about if, if we open the pod? Help me under, why do we then need the housing, the $200,000 for the housing?
We don't necessarily. I would, I would look to see what budget line that's exactly coming out of. This was created under Sheriff Lewis due to the low female officer numbers. Things have changed. We can be more creative in how we staff that unit. So, we wouldn't need that kind of money, quite frankly. And I don't have the transportation costs in front of me, but I'm, I'm assuming they are, they're pretty high. I would imagine they're, they're teetering over $100,000, maybe more. I don't know the numbers exactly, but this has been going on since January.
And you, you wouldn't have as much transportation costs if they were housed in-house, so to speak?
Their court responsibilities would still be here, but they're local. They're not traveling to and from Rochester and then bringing them back to Rochester after court proceedings.
Okay, I, okay, I think I follow you.
Supervisor Reinhardt.
I think the last question I have, to Frank's point, and I guess one of the concerns is, let's say you open up this, you hire five officers, and you open the female pod, and all of a sudden, the female population goes to two inmates. Now, we're paying, basically to keep a pod open for two inmates, where it would certainly be more cost-effective to house them out. What's the plan, should that happen, so that there's some offset somewhere? So, in other words, would that, would you be able to shift officers to cut down on overtime in the other pod? Is that, I mean, where does, how does that play out?
Sure, and I'm, again, I'm, full strength is 38 officers. Prior years, it was 53 due to higher jail population. I'm absolutely for taking a look at creative ways to keep the correction officers busy, so to speak. If there is one or two inmates, I certainly would look at that feasibility and the cost effectiveness of that. But, as I said, there is, there is a demand for female incarcerated individuals, and it's tough to say right this second on how the future is, looks. I do know from conversations with the State Sheriff's Association, there's a good chance that many jails are gonna be looked upon to house more than current times.
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Tim, has there been, I've read in the Post that there's been conversation that, in fact, if the new administration does do this roundup, that they would be looking to county incarceration systems to hold some of these folks that they plan to deport. Have you, has there been any conversation to that effect?
We have spoken with U.S. Marshals on that, yes.
Any more discussion?
Do you have any in your jail right now?
I'm sorry?
You have any migrants in your jail right now?
No. We have two federal, but they're not in that classification.
But it is, so these two inmates, you have to keep two extra people because they're in there, correct? To transport them?
Due to the low, low population, we're able to use our current transport team, the on-duty transport team.
I thought you said it was in the contract, they had to have two extra.
Depending on the population, and I don't know the exact numbers, but if we had a higher population of federal inmates, then we would be required to have that extra transport team for the Rochester transports for them, yes.
So, potentially, if there's more inmates, there is a break-even point, and then potentially make money, because we're, like, if all the cells are full?
Yes. If I could just add that, no matter what happens, if a jail doesn't, doesn't approve to accept our inmates, we're responsible for them. So.
Right.
We could theoretically be required to open a pod, no matter what happens. I, I go back to the belief that these are our responsibility, and I stand behind that. I can't support any cuts to public safety or any correction positions at this point, given the fact that they've lost 15 over the last number of years. So, that's my position. I understand the board's position, and I respect that.
Tim, can I just ask, how many pods are there, how many potential pods are there?
There's a total of three.
Three, okay. Two male, one male, or two male, one female?
That's correct. The female pod is about half the size of the male pods.
Any more discussion? Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you.
All those in favor on the amendment proposed?
Did you reread the amendment?
Supervisor.
So, the amendment was to remove hiring correction officers for the purpose of opening a second pod.
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Just to clarify, these are not new positions, correct?
I have.
But they're, they're in the current budget. Okay, I just, I want to make sure.
They were in '24, you'd be taking them out of '25.
Okay, that's what, yeah.
The fact that, the new mandate, it's hard to put, the state has let, there's new laws that most people have to be released. You can commit B felony drug stuff, and they have to release you. Poor people were held, and it's just, now it's not. So, we don't even have one full pod there right now. It's half-full, the pod we have, and I understand the females can't be in there, but my point is, if you don't have at least seven to eight people in there, you're losing money all the time. You can't break even until you hit, well, even then, it's $1,400 a day. You really need 14 people, because it costs you less than $100 to farm them out. So, you farm out seven, you're paying $700, you're still saving $700 every single day.
But what happens if you can't farm them out? All of them?
Well, there's always those what-ifs. We could make a million what-ifs on his budget, and then the budget could be $70 billion, but you can't. It's just, just mathematically, it does not make any sense for me to see it open when you, right now, there is places to house them, and people are willing to take them. For them, the $100 a day is worth it. To me, it's not, because of the mandates of the, how many correction officers have to be on all the time.
This pod's gonna be a female pod, then?
Yes.
Yes. So, right now, we have five inmates, so we'd be, we're spending $500 a day, but to open the pod, it's at least $1,400 a day. So, we'd be losing $900 every day it's open. $6,000 a week, and then it's how much a year? You know, $300,000. Look, I'm just giving the numbers. We're trying to cut on the budget. I just, we're not affecting any employees we have now. We're trying to cut the affiliates' money, you know, this is, not us hiring new people. Yeah, it's in the budget, but they're not employees at this time, so we're not, like, laying anybody off or doing anything like that.
Okay. Any more discussion on the amendment? Everybody understand? Supervisor Partee.
Can I ask the sheriff another question?
Sheriff, would you join us again, please? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Your 2025 budget right now includes opening a pod, but also includes an additional $200,000. So, am I correct, $200,000 to take them to Monroe County and?
I believe there's some money in there related to the housing out. I don't know the exact, and I don't know what line that exactly comes out of. I would think that if we went in the direction of funding these positions, that we should still have some money to consider housing out due to special needs of certain individuals that we can't necessarily take care of, whether it's mental health needs or physical ailments and things. There is a need for some money in, in that regard. I will say that some of these positions, we'd have to check, I'd have to check with the Commission of Correction, because they do, they actually set the, the minimum staffing in the jail. And that goes county by county. They set some of those rules. So, I do think before that's made, I think that there should be a little further research. I do think the, there's a difference between unfunding and eliminating, and I think that I certainly need to take that into consideration as well for the future. Elimination would require the unions, I think, to be notified as well. So, whether it's unfunding or eliminating, I don't know what the position of the board will be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
Supervisor Partee's point, couldn't we, if we supported the pod, couldn't we reduce the other item?
I can't hear you, Jeff.
I'm sorry. To Supervisor Partee's question, I think Frank or somebody asked it, too. If we reduced, if we kept the positions for the pod. if we kept the positions for the pod, but reduced the other funding, because I, I mean, maybe I don't get it, but it seems like Frank made a good point. I don't know why you would need both. Either you're housing them or you're shipping them off. You wouldn't eliminate, to Tim's point, all the transportation costs, because there's other special things that he needs it for. Unless, Tim, I'm missing something, my?
I think that's a fair aside.
What's the actual amendment on the floor right now? Is there a dollar, well, there's got to be a dollar amount associated with it for us to amend the budget? That's what I'm asking.
Well, I guess it would start with that, hiring those five positions.
And do we have a dollar amount associated with those five positions?
The numbers I got from Tim, from his, it's $1,413 a day to have, but that wouldn't, it would be more than those five positions you would cut, because five people can't run a pod, because they get days off and stuff like that. So, the extra dollar amount, I, I, we'd have to figure that out. I would guess closing that pod would save anywhere from $700,000 to $800,000 a year in the budget, would be my guess.
I, I think the number Supervisor Partee is looking for is you would have to take five correction officer positions in the contract at base pay, whatever starting rate is, come up with that number plus benefits, and that would give you the, the number that I think you're looking for that would have to amend the budget. Not what it costs per day, but what it costs, what a step-one correction officer plus benefits costs the county, is, is the number you would have to, to know. And that would be how much, you know, times five, that would be your number. Unless I'm?
Well, I mean, there has to be more expenses to it, because they can't man it, I don't know then. If that would include layoffs or not, I don't know. That would be, I mean?
But if it's in the budget, it's going to be in the budget as a payroll line item plus benefits, and they would have to come out of this account at, and that would have to be what the budgeted number for those five positions is. I mean, you could make the argument down the road about the overtime budget or whatever affecting however, but the true number would be the five positions at whatever their base rate plus benefits, is that, that would be your number.
Did anybody second this?
Or what I was getting at was, leave the five positions, come up with a dollar amount on a different line for shipping them out?
I didn't get the chance to take a vote.
I'm sorry, what?
No, no, I'm just trying to answer his question.
I don't have that number, so I, I can't tell you what five people cost, so I.
What's the base rate for a correction officer?
Supervisor Latini?
Yeah, should we table this until we have a better sum, a detailed summary financially? We can make a more, a more informed decision.
I don't know if you can table it, because we have to vote the budget, and this is part of the budget discussion. Because if you, you can't, you can't not table it and then add it back in.
It's already part of the budget.
Yeah, this is part, this is already in the budget they're trying to.
Supervisor Borst?
So, I just have a question. So, if we, could the $200,000 for housing out come out of the line with the five employees' positions and use that? Ultimately, you're either doing the $200,000, house out, or the five employees. So, if we use the, the line item for the employees to pay the housing out, and then if it changes, then the money, I mean, do we really need the $200,000 in that line? Is that something that could be coming out of the salary line?
Well, I do have, from here, according to the finance manager down at the correction, she says it costs approximately $1,413.25 a day in salary about. Remove that from the budget.
What is it per hour?
That's what it costs us to run that every day. I come up with, that is $550,836. So, over half a million dollars a year to open that.
If my math was right, based on starting rate, just the salary without benefits for five correction officers for the year is $253,240.
Without benefits?
That's without benefits. That's just, that's just the dollars.
After a half million dollars.
Supervisor Shipley, did you have your hand up?
Yeah. Number one, I'm for removing another half a million dollars from this current budget proposal, but I don't feel I have enough information that I could in good conscience vote on.
Current, what we have in front of us. So, if, if you're going to bring that to a vote, I'm going to have to abstain right now, because I don't, I don't feel we have good information to put a number on it. Sorry.
I'm sorry, they said it costs $515,836 to open that pod for the year. It's just in employees, that's not counting lights eaten and all that stuff. That's their, their, that's what I got from that. I didn't cover that, no. That's exactly what I was told by the finance manager.
Is there any more discussion? Are we ready to vote on this amendment? You want to put that amount in your amendment? I mean, do you want to even know, just so you at least have a dollar amount with it?
I'll make the amendment to remove the higher five correction officers and lowering, including that, lowering the budget, $515,836 from the corrections for opening this.
Thank you. All right. I think we had enough discussion on that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes. No?
No.
Okay.
Abstain?
Abstain.
I think there's enough that that, I think that amendment fails. I only heard two ayes, so, all right, back on the original motion. We had a first and a second. Any more amendments? Supervisor Partee? It was on adopting the budget as it sat.
Well, to Frank's point, I would, did I make a motion?
You want to make another amendment motion? Go ahead.
I would move that we reduce the transportation of prisoner costs $175,000.
So, you're making?
$175,000. If there's 250 budget, I'm sorry.
200.
200? Oh, then maybe, it was only 200, Tim? Or Julie, or somebody? It's only 200 budgeted?
I'm not counting that line item to the budget.
Oh. So, we don't know what it costs us to transport, or is it just not, it's just in other things, I guess? So, it's in multiple things?
Isn't, isn't there a line item in the budget for housing out? The, the $100 a day, I mean, they had to be in there somewhere.
There probably is. I don't have the budget, the situation's available, or I'm.
So, I think Supervisor Trell, you're, you're confusing transportation costs with housing out costs, because they have to pay the county so much a day per inmate. I'm, I'm.
Fair enough, yeah.
Fairly certain that was in the budget. So, to your point, if, if your, your motion would be for the housing out fees, they were budgeted, but I would only ask, and I would like the sheriff to, before you cut that completely, you would have to guarantee that they're in here by January 1, because they're going to incur a cost for every day after January that they are not in there.
And my intent?
I'm sorry, it's $120,000 for housed-out inmates.
And my intent is not to cut it, because Tim made a good point about other expenses.
But the other expenses were, so, so housing out is one line item. That's what they have to pay the other counties. Transportation and all the other stuff is in other places.
But in theory, besides the housing out unit costs, there should be savings in general, because those officers aren't performing that, taking them to other facilities.
Correct. But I don't know where that is.
It's just nebulous.
I don't know where that is in the budget, though. It's probably mixed in with different other, I would think.
That is the line, I mean, you have the detailed budget. So, it's only in for less than half of what it is for current costs?
It's half because we didn't spend as much this year, or?
No, we're only budgeting, that's a line item that's already been cut. It's $120,000 in the current, proposed budget.
Okay.
But for the current year, '24, there's expensive of at least $260,000.
Huh?
Well, we don't have the second pod.
All right, so we've.
Supervisor Jeff Trell, what do you got?
So, we've already accounted for the fact that if the pod is open, these folks will be here and the, or the housing, the out-of-county housing cost will be less. All right, I withdraw my motion. All right, do, yeah, whatever.
I think you got a second anyway, but I figure we're back on discussion. I, I just want to throw something out there, food for thought. You know, during the budget process with the task force, you know, I can't even tell you how much time we've spent on this budget, but I can tell, I, I do think it's important you all know that in the discussion, me and the sheriff did get together, I had asked him to cut a very large amount, and he come back with what he thought he could do without jeopardizing public safety for the 2025 budget proposal from the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department already cut out $650,000, okay? I had asked him to cut $800,000. He came back with $650,000, and I lived with that in fairness, because I thought he made a good faith effort. I promised him at that point, and I'm going to keep to my word, that I could not be a part of cutting those five positions. That's just my opinion, my promise to him. I'm not going back on that. So, I, I don't know where else, you know, there's lots of other things we could do, but I can't do that to the Sheriff's Department when he already made a concession of $650,000. And I have no problem, and I don't mean no disrespect to any other supervisors, you know, Frank, I, no disrespect towards your opinion, you guys, I, it's good debate, good conversation, but I can't go back on my word to him and on those five positions, so whatever else we want to do and have discussion.
Comment on that?
Yes, sir.
I appreciate your saying he cut $650,000, but as to what Jeff said earlier, if, if you increased it from last year $4 million and you, and you cut $650,000, you didn't cut your budget. You know what I'm saying? To me, cutting $650,000 is, last year, you're $100,000, now you're $650 less, not.
Well, he's taken, but he had what he proposed, yeah.
No, but I, I, look, it was my, I don't, I'm okay with it. You guys, we vote, just my own opinion, but I, I don't see.
Healthy debate, Frank.
$650 cut is true, because you went up $4 million.
Well, I get what you're saying. He's not cutting out because he went up. I get what you're saying. But when, when, when the budget season opens up, every department goes in and puts in their number they want for '25, okay? That's what the department has, does. Then it goes back, then it goes up to the next, to the next level, which is county manager. And the county manager goes in and cuts in dice. Normally, that would be them by themselves. They would tell a department head, you're not getting that, and that's it. I didn't do that. I worked with the task force, because I didn't do this before. That's where we started going through, we cut $5 million off this to start with already, the proposed budget. Then, I went to other departments and asked them to cut even more. So, there has been a good faith effort to cut more off this proposed budget. I get it's still an increase, but there was an effort made to, to cut this down. I know nobody's happy with the end result, but that's where we're at right now. So, we're, we're still having discussion over the original, or what was in the packet tonight. If there's any other amendments that somebody would like to offer, we've already had one and failed, we had one removed. What's next? Supervisor Shipley, you got a turn.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
As I look at the numbers we have in front of us, the amount that you cut from our affiliates, cut from the affiliates.
$63,000. So, my motion is to take $563,000 from the property reduction fund and reduce the budget accordingly. That's my motion.
I'll second the motion.
We got a second on that. Any discussion? Supervisor Heisman?
Is that legal? The law says you only can use a one-quarter, whatever, whatever the felt, the calculation comes out to. So, is that, are they, are they going over the quarter then? What, are we allowed to take out?
County attorney, finance director, would you like to join us if you could answer the question, please? I'm not an attorney.
No, I said county, I said county attorney. I'm not sure if I understand your question correctly.
Guys, wait, hold, timeout. Come out to the microphone, please, because nobody can hear you if you don't. Thank you.
I'm not sure if I understand your question correctly, but the money has to be used as it was set out for within that reserve fund.
Right. It's divided into four sections every year. You can't go over that one number, like, whatever the number is for this year.
The minimum is set out in the resolution or the policy, that's right.
So, the policy, the policy sets the dollar amount that is, from 2023, for example, we set aside a certain dollar amount. A quarter of that is set aside for the next four years. There is some unappropriated dollars that are in that reserve account. So, I believe what is being requested is to use the amount that is set aside from the 25% from the previous four years in addition to add to another $500,000 from that unappropriated that is not cutting into dollars that were already set aside for future years.
I just want to make sure you're doing it legally when you said you add more.
Supervisor, satisfied with your answer?
Well, if he says not going over it, if they're not over, we're good.
Okay. Supervisor Reinhardt?
Thank you. I'm not necessarily opposed to working with reinstated funding, but I think taking it from that tax reserve fund is a mistake. I think we should look somewhere else, whether that be upping, you know, a quarter of something, but I think taking more money out of that tax reserve fund is a mistake.
Well, until you, until the committee can come up with where you can grab $563,000, I would say we need to approve our budget ASAP. We have until what?
December 20th. December 20th. If by December 20th, this body does not adapt the budget, the tentative budget that's filed with the count, with the clerk will become the budget.
And that's 20.
25.3% increase. So, I'm trying to, if the budget group can come up with $563,000 in other areas, I'm good with that, but I'm just trying to get something passed tonight to give that committee some direction.
Is that 500, as you say, is that the, what was the amount of the affiliate funding?
63,000.
Supervisor Partee, hang on, go ahead.
The only thing I'm going to say about that $63,000 is that is based on the county manager reduction. That is not the original ask. So, the affiliate organizations asked for X amount. I'm going to use Soil and Water as an example, because she said $11,000 earlier. When I looked at the presentation, by holding them to 2024 levels based on the tentative budget, it's only a difference of $5,000. So, it doesn't match their ask. I'm ju, I'm just making that clear, that if that was approved, to go back to the tentative budget, it's not going to be necessarily what everybody asked for. That's all. Am I right? Julie, I guess, yeah, she's nodding her head. Okay, I'm right.
How much did you want to take out for affiliate organizations, Supervisor? I missed the.
63.
Six. Well, no, I just didn't know where you were throwing out 500-some-thousand. I didn't know where that number was coming from.
$500,000 would get us to below 10% increase, okay? The $63,000 was the amount that the affiliate has listed on the sheet. We moved. So, I can only go by the numbers that are in front of me.
Supervisor Borst?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, but Melissa saved the $60,000 earlier for next year's budget.
It's grant funding, it doesn't go back to the budget.
It doesn't go back to the budget, okay. All right.
And to answer, just to comment on what you said, Supervisor Shipley, the committee's work is over. I mean, this body needs to decide what they want to do or not. I mean, the committee has done its task, and I don't know what else we can do, you know? I really don't. I mean.
Well, I think they've done a tremendous job for all the numbers that come up with. To reduce it from 25?
Over 25% down to about 13, 13.6%.
It stands right now. About 13, 13.6% it stands right now. I, I believe that we need to get it under 10% in order for, to be comfortable.
Borst.
Supervisor Borst.
I just want to make mention that the original tax rate change was 70.3% that you started with, right?
I'm sorry.
But that's, everybody got their full ask.
Yeah, so the original ask, from the department heads' ask was 70.3% for tax rate, right?
Increase.
So it went from 70.3 to 13.6 in this proposal.
That's what I said, this was a very difficult road to get to, and I understand it's, 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 it's a hard pill to swallow, but. Supervisor Brunel, did you have something?
Yes, you started out with a 30% increase, you got it down to 25, then down to 17, and now down to 13. In a $130,000 house, it's going to be a $58 increase. You keep cutting, we're going to be in trouble about three quarters of the year and be short-stocked. You've worked this hard, this long, you've got it down, haven't had a raise in 10 years, and this is the position we're in. Pass it tonight and let's get on.
Supervisor Reinhardt?
Thank you, and I'm going to kind of call on Julie for this, I, just so the numbers are out there, I don't, I, I'm concerned with using X amount out of tax reserve, because it's going to run out, and I think it's important that you hear the numbers, so I'm going to ask Julie, how much did we use this year? How much have we used the last year? What is left, and how much is projected to go into it after the 2024 budget? So you see what you're using versus what you're putting in.
Okay, can you, I'm sorry, can you come out to the microphone?
I know there was a lot.
I did receive a comment that people watching online are having a hard time hearing people, so if you could,
so for the 2025, 5.3 million is what was set aside from 25% of the previous four years that was used. We added an additional 1.6 million to bring it to a total of $7 million used in the proposed tentative budget. We have a total of 19 million, just over, in the tax reserve allocation. Of that, 7.2 million set aside for future years for those 25% calculations. 7,000 that we're using for 2025, subtracting the interest out of there, that leaves a remaining balance of just under 4 million, 3.95, that's available to be used in future years above and beyond the 25% that's set aside. So if we continue to use it at the rate we used it in '25, right now, last year in '24, 1.8 million additional was used, we will, that will, unappropriated dollars would be gone in about two and a half, three years. And all we would have are those extra that had been set aside from the current year's amounts.
So.
Supervisor Jeff Shipley?
So Julie, if we, Bob's idea, if we do the five, if we do the.
Jeff Trout, I'm sorry.
If we do, I didn't, oh, I'm sorry. If, if we did the additional 500,000, how does that shrink the timeframe?
That would be about, bring it down to 3.4 million, and that would probably be just two years worth using it at the current existing rate.
So, one question, how much are you projecting the budget we're going to have over, how much money are we going to have at the end of this year, you think?
At this point, I can't say, because we still have multiple revenue sources and pieces to be recorded. So, I mean, basically, on the last couple of years, we've been at about four and a half to five million dollars, depending on where we're at with those vacancies, but again, this is where, if there are end-up vacancies for the year, that's the majority of what gets put back, so as we're cutting positions out of the budget, that's a less potential for additional vacancies that are going to have more money to fund that account in the future.
Julie, do you know roughly, for every million that the bu- the budget, what does that equal in a percentage? So if we were only able to take 3 million next year as opposed to 4 million per se, what does that translate to in a percentage? Would it take it from 10% to 16%? Does it take it from 10% to 12%? I know that's a tough question to ask off the top of your head, I guess I'm just trying to equate that, we're talking about the, the percentage tax increase, and I'm just concerned that if we keep taking the money, we don't have as much to put down. Instead of, this year, great, we may be at 10%, but next year, we may go up another 12% because you have a million less to offset next year's, the 2026 budget. So I'm trying to put it into perspective, is the, what the money means today versus what it's going to equal in a percentage next year?
I mean, if we look at the, with the proposed changes that were made from the tentative budget, it was a reduction of 1.4 million, and it dropped from 25% to 13.6, so we dropped 12% for 1.4 million.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Um, I, I, I agree with Supervisor, Supervisor Reinhardt, but then, when I look at the proposed cuts or freezes and such, and the holds, I mean, we could make the same argument, when we hold things and don't fill them, all we're doing, and, and you know, Aaron mentioned this with Soil and Water and A, all we're doing is pushing that off to the next year, the future generation. So, you're either borrowing from savings, or you're putting off future expenses that now you have to make up even more for. Right? It's just, I mean, it's either, it's a, almost like a shell game, because you either, you either got to do one or the other.
Not if you're talking personnel.
Yeah, but.
You could put personnel off forever.
If I look at one, two, three, four, five, there's five hold proposals, hold positions in the, in the current resolution, right? Some are six months, some are 12 months. Well, if you don't, in, in the 26 budget, if you don't continue those holds, then you've got to pay for them. So, you, all you've done is kicked the can down the road another year.
Yeah, to a point, I, I understand your point.
So, I mean, whether we use 500,000 out of the reserve, or we hold these things, or both, it's just kicking the can.
I agree, and there's no easy answers to this, and, but the point is, and I, I'm just trying to be open that we need to be honest what the future holds if we continue to take money out of that fund at the rate we're taking out, that's all I'm saying. That we can't be naive, and, and you can't be surprised down the road when that fund goes dry, that's, that's my point to this.
And I totally, I absolutely support that, and I think, you know, I, I think the other point is that, and the reason why I'm leaning towards what Bob has suggested is because then it gives the Ways and Means Committee the following year to work on a multi-year plan, and to give both the department heads and the affiliates, and the taxpayer, a multi-year plan to say, okay, folks, you know, we, we use some additional reserves to cushion the tax increase, but you need to be aware that over the next two, three, four, five years, you know, we are in fact looking at double-digit tax increases because of decisions that have been made for the last decade or so. And to Supervisor Brunel's point, I mean, when you look at those, you look at the tax rates, I mean, well, you guys have them, I mean, it, it, we're, we're returning to rates that were still lower than we had been for, you know, a decade.
Even at the 13%, I think it brought it back to what we, the tax rate was in 2019, or '23? 2023. And again, there's no, there's no easy answers.
I, I agree, and I, and I do appreciate all the work that Task Force and the Ways and Means Committee did, I don't want that to be.
Supervisor Heisen.
We're going to discuss this all night, all night, we aren't going to get anywhere, so I'd like to move the question and act on it now.
On Supervisor's amendment?
To adopt the budget. I don't think he's, I don't think he's got a second on his.
He did get a second, we're on discussion, he did get a second, yes.
Just, I want to ask before, can somebody please reread the motion we are voting? That's all I ask.
Supervisor Shipley, can you reread, re-say your?
My motion was to take 563,000 out of our tax redu- reduction and reduce the proposed 25 budget accordingly.
Can I think, can I ask you to clarify, it's an additional 500, not take, it's an additional than what has already been proposed?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
And in that.
With the, the sheet that showed 13.6, that the committee voted on tonight, that's before us now.
And you're putting the money back in the affiliates.
Well, I don't know if it's the full amount, but it's the amount that's in this that says it's a reduction.
Right, well, that's putting it back to, putting the 63,000 back in the affiliate line.
And, and taking an extra 500,000 from the tax reduction fund.
Right.
So, I guess you're saying you want it set at 1.4?
When I, if I say well, but it's over many 20 cents or whatever the hell it is. I mean, no one, no one in this contact.
Well, it'd be 1.9.
I mean, I've got to raise my. You know, it's 60 cents, but it's still ours, it's still half, like even when I.
Just the shade under.
Oh, I realize that, but it's, it's not on my sheet, it's lower than what's on our sheet. So the tax increase will be below 10%.
Right.
Which is not even on the proposal.
He's going to take 500,000 on here.
Well, he wants to add it, remember, to 1.4, he wants to add 500,000. So if you add 500,000, 1.4, that's 2.1 million.
1.9.
Take the 1.4462.
And add 563,000, that would put the total amount at 1,967,622.
Okay, Supervisor Partee.
Can I ask the Finance Director to, can you give us the amount, that 63,000, can you give us the breakdown? Yeah? What it would put, what it would take them each to, I guess?
If the 63,000 was put back, what were the numbers for the affiliates?
Putting that back, Soil and Water, 530,000, Cornell Cooperative Extension, 501,000. The library is a total of 155,000. Seneca County Ag, 6,000, Beverly Animal Shelter, 55,000, Pathway Homes, 6,000. Village of Waterloo Memorial Day Committee, 5,000, Seneca County IDA, 65,000.
Okay, so one question I'm going to ask specifically to Soil and Water, Aaron said she, her ask was $11,000. That cover that, I don't, I don't know what her original ask was.
That's a, in the proposed tentative budget, it's a $5,000 increase, so if it's 11,000, then it would be another 6,000, is that accurate?
Yeah, so we ask for almost 1,000, if they're going to find out and.
They're still short.
I'm just pointing that out.
About another 7,000 would be, so that would be, instead of 63,000, that would be 70,000 to get to their ask. The tentative budget, as Supervisor Partee mentioned earlier, is back to the proposed tentative budget, which is not necessarily the requested amounts, because we had already made some.
So the, I can ask.
Supervisor.
So, the affiliates were cut, or at least Soil and Water was cut from as a request. Can you look at Cooperative Extension?
I, I don't have the requests with me.
No, I mean, just the, I'm sorry, I missed, I'm sorry, Julie, I.
So Cornell Cooperative Extension, 2024 rate was 475,000, proposed tentative budget 501, with the committee adjusted budget was bringing it back to the 475.
If you're going to put all, if you're going to put all the affiliates up to their ask, 60, 70,000 will not cover, there's not enough money.
No, that's good, I, I'm glad to know that, but, because when I asked that earlier, or I think maybe in Ways and Means, I was under the impression that, you know, there was a decent argument that, hey, we've asked departments to cut from their original request, so it's only right to ask the affiliates to freeze, but, and in fact, at least in Soil and Water's example, we're cutting the affiliates' request, we're not just. So we actually are treating them like some of the other departments.
That, that would be a correct statement, I guess.
Okay, that's why I wanted to clarify, because I was under a different perception.
Any more discussion on the opposed, proposed amendment? Which they get a first and a second, so, alright, we're going to call for a vote for it. Still roll call vote on this, please.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Supervisor Reynolds.
Yes.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
Yes.
Supervisor Brunel.
Nay.
Supervisor Latini.
Nay.
Supervisor Borst.
Yes.
Supervisor Hayes.
Nay.
Supervisor Schmider.
Yes.
Cornet Water is absent, Supervisor Reinhardt.
Yes.
Supervisor Partee. Nay. Supervisor Heisen.
No.
And Trout was absent, Supervisor Unzlo.
No.
Supervisor Shipley.
Yes.
Yeah, so 386 yeses, 237 nays, so the amendment did pass. Okay. Supervisor Partee, do you want to go back to as amended, or is there any more discussion?
Is there any more discussion, can I make an amendment to soil and water?
Sure you can, you can do whatever you want. You can be here all night.
Out of the 563,000 we just added, can we take 7,000 from the 500 to make sure Soil and Water gets their 11,000 ask? I guess that's what I'm asking.
Second.
I don't know how to put that in this resolution, though.
This is going to be a hell of a cut and paste.
I'll second.
You made a motion, you got a second, any discussion on this amendment?
Can you tell me, can you tell me what the new tax rate's going to be? Can't do that?
Off the top of my head.
We're going to make an amendment on something that we have no idea what the tax rate's going to be.
Julie, do you have that?
Supervisor Heisen.
Are you vote to the, did the amendment get total vote?
386.
386?
386 yeses, 237 nays.
So part of your amendment, are you going to, if the other affiliates didn't get what they asked for, are you going to give them too? Because we don't know what they asked for. We just go to Soil and Water?
I'm only making an amendment for Soil and Water right now. That 63,000, by adding it back in, is to whatever was in the tentative budget. I only know that Soil and Water. I don't know, guys can say no.
Well, I, I just wonder if we take care of all of them, or just how we decide.
Any more discussion on this amendment?
What's the amendment?
Supervisor Partee, give them back, add 7,000, is that what you said?
It's not really changing the number that Supervisor Shipley just did. I'm just asking, out of the 563,000 we just reduced, right, or no? Or we just, whatever we just did, that 7,000 goes, 7,000 of that 500.
They get their original ask.
Yes.
Can I just ask a question, would it be easier, and I don't know if we could do this, instead of doing it now, tonight, like this, to do a budget transfer somewhere down the road? Rather than try to move line items and all this other stuff to, you know, if the, it's not going to change the amendment or the dollar amount that just went through, wouldn't it be simpler to do a budget transfer somewhere down the road?
Well, we, we still have not, we've not voted on.
You're right.
What the affiliate organizations are going to get. Like, this is what we're doing in the budget, but we have to do the next meeting, I believe, right?
Yes.
There will be a list, individual list, on what the affiliate organizations will get out of the pot. So there's still time, so you actually don't have to do that tonight, just to.
I rescind my amendment.
Thank you.
Supervisor Jeff Trout.
I do think it is important, like Supervisor Hayes said, that before we leave here, I think we owe it to everybody to put the number out there, what the percentage is going to be.
Well, I.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout.
I have a mathematical, Julie, question, so, I mean, if I just look at the difference between a 13. So, I mean, if I just look at, the difference between a 13.5% and 12.7% is roughly 86, 87,000. So if we reduce the budget, the tax rate by 563,000.
It's really only 500,000 because you're adding back another 10.
Oh. Okay, all right, so. Okay.
All right. I'll take that.
Because I was trying to figure out like what 86,000 would be worth, but.
Okay.
Any more amendments or discussion?
We're voting on the amended resolution.
As amended.
As amended. So.
More discussion? Supervisor Partee, do you want to roll with it then?
Sure. Where supervisors amends and adopts the 2025 county budget as amended.
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion on this? As amended? Are we ready to vote? Ready to vote? Roll call, please.
Supervisor Reynolds?
Yes.
Supervisor Jeffrey Trout?
Yes.
Supervisor Braunell?
Yes.
Supervisor Latini?
No.
Supervisor Borst?
Yes.
Supervisor Hayes?
No.
Supervisor Schmider?
Yes.
Cornel Waters absent. Supervisor Reinhardt?
Yes.
Supervisor Partee?
Yes.
Supervisor Heisen?
No.
Supervisor Don Trout was absent. Supervisor Unzlo?
No.
Supervisor Shipley?
Yes.
All right. So that is 442 yes, 181 nays. So that passed. Okay.
Make yourself a budget.
The budget has been passed.
Next year. I say, let's get one.
At what percentage? We don't know.
9.3.
Nine to 10.
Next year, next year, 22 and a half. Want to bet?
Tentative.
That's the guesstimate.
22 and a half. Remember that, you guys, next year. You can tell everybody why it's 22 and a half. We don't have any money left.
But at least they'll have a year to prepare for it.
We can cut everybody out.
Hey, discussion's over. We're moving on here. We've talked that to death.
Yes, Mr. Trump.
Unfinished business. Any unfinished business for this body? New business. Supervisor Reinhardt?
Thank you. I offer a motion to introduce all, any and all new business to come before this board in accordance with the rule under Order Number 29.
Second.
A second? Any discussion on this? All in favor on the Rule 29?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay. Supervisor Borst?
Motion to authorize Commissioner of Human Services to enter into contract with a permitted facility for the proper transportation placement in care of a foster care youth.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on this? We have an issue with a youth that we have to attend to. That's why we're doing this, so cannot get into the details, but this is a necessary thing that Commissioner asked us to do, so. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Any other new business? Supervisor Reinhardt, special order of the day?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Have a good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm trying, but.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I, I still don't know how much you're getting back.
I, I was good with the first budget.